Good evening. We officially began our meeting a little while ago, and I will now ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Tonight, we are pleased to recognize 29 outstanding Parkway teachers who have been selected by their peers as their school's Teacher of the Year. Their dedication to students, community spirit, and personal commitment to excellence have earned them this honor. A special thank you to the Parkway Alumni Association for hosting a reception prior to tonight's meeting for the teachers and their families. The Alumni Association provides monetary awards and crystal apples for the elementary, middle, and high school Teachers of the Year recipients, which they will receive at Appreciation Evening. At this time, I would like to welcome Dr. Chelsea Watson, Deputy Superintendent, to introduce our Elementary Teachers of the Year. I would also like to welcome Nico Toro, President of the Parkway Alumni Association, to join us in congratulating our teachers.
Good evening, President Todd. You don't know the new Parkway handshake. Good evening, President Todd. Vice President, Ms. Hopper, maybe she's watching with us. Dr. Marty, members of the Board, Mrs. Stover. Thank you for having us here this evening to recognize our Teachers of the Year. It's been said that some teachers tell. It's been said that good teachers explain. It's been said that the superior teacher demonstrates, and the great teacher inspires. So, look around here tonight. I think we are surrounded by greatness, and to all of the educators that we are honoring this evening, congratulations, and thank you for inspiring the youth, the parents, all of our community for what you do every day, because we know that you change lives every single day, and you make this world a better place. I feel like I should be talking like this. You take one student at a time, one day at a time, and you make a difference. Henry Adams once observed that a teacher affects eternity, because you can never tell where a teacher's influence stops. Your influence goes on and on. There are not many professions that have such an impact on our future. So, thank you. Congratulations to you all. Feel the moment, celebrate the moment, celebrate the year, and be honored that you are recognizing the teachers in your building, because you are an example of greatness. So, at this time, I'm going to recognize the Elementary Teachers of the Year. When I call your name, please come forward to be recognized by the Board. And the Early Childhood Teacher of the Year. We're going to start with Barrett's Elementary School. Deandra McGuire, Reading Specialist. Belle Reeve. Heather Robertson, 5th Grade. Carmen Trails. Erin Arledge, Instructional Coach. Claymont. Jennifer Whitner, 1st Grade. Green Trails. Lisa Shipley, Gifted. Craig. Katie Sullivan, 2nd Grade. Our Early Childhood Teacher of the Year is not here, but I'd like to recognize her, Melissa Nevers, the School Counselor. Our Hannah Woods Teacher of the Year is not here, but I would like to also recognize her, 5th Grade Teacher Jamie Cohi. Henry Vanessa Simon, 4th Grade. Highcroft Ridge. Cindy Beeler, Counselor. Mason Ridge. Linda Corsali, 1st Grade, and the Elementary Teacher of the Year. McKelvey Megan McCaffrey, 3rd Grade. Oakbrook. Dr. Colleen McNeely, Art. Piermont Christine Rousch, Special Educator. Our Riverbend Teacher of the Year is not here. She's actually not feeling well tonight, I do know that. Heather Karen, 2nd Grade. Our Ross Teacher of the Year, Sharonda Brassfield, 3rd Grade. Our Shenandoah Valley Teacher of the Year, Courtney Knowles, Kindergarten. Our Sorento Springs Teacher of the Year is not in attendance, but would like to recognize her, Katie Edwards, 5th Grade. And our Ren Hallow Teacher of the Year, Kim Dressel, School Counselor. At this time, I would like to introduce my colleague, Dr. Greg Matheson, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, to share the Middle and High School Teachers of the Year. Dr. Matheson.
All right, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Watson, and congratulations to our Elementary Teachers of the Year, as well as our Secondary Teachers of the Year. It's my honor and privilege to introduce our amazing Middle School and High School Teachers of the Year. First, we'll start with Middle School. From Central Middle School, Melanie Lund, TLA. From Northeast Middle School, Ryan Deckard, Math. Ryan was also the Middle School Teacher of the Year, as well as our District Teacher of the Year. From South Middle, Danielle Voss, Math. From Southwest Middle, Neil Daniels, Social Studies. From West Middle, Barb Eckert, Special Educator. Now, I'd like to introduce our High School Teacher of the Year. Central High, Andrea Williamson, Spanish. From Fern Ridge, Nancy Suter, Facts. From North High... From North High, Becky Samargic, Facts. From South High, our High School Teacher of the Year, Lindsay Perkins, Business. And not in attendance tonight, from West High, Amy Van Mutter Woodward, from Teachers' Science.
Congratulations again to all of our students and teachers. Thanks also to the members of the Teacher of the Year Selection Committee, chaired by Sarah Hale from Central High. I know they enjoy reading nominations, but it's not always an easy task to narrow it down to the Elementary, Middle, High School, and District Teachers of the Year. Thank you to all the students here supporting your teachers, and the teachers, and the families, and your colleagues and administrators for joining you here tonight. We are honored to have you with us, and we really appreciate your service to the district. This time, we'll take a short break, and we'll resume the Board meeting in a few moments.
Okay, we are unressessed. Tonight, we have, we had our special recognitions. Thanks for those of you that stuck around for the rest of the meeting. Next, we have several additions, corrections and/or modifications to the agenda. The first is 6.01, addition to Agenda Item 10.28, approval of corporate partnership with Train U.S. Incorporated, and 6.02, addendum to Agenda Item 10.04, approval of personnel items. Next, we have citizen statements. However, prior to that, I, most of you have probably seen the communication that went out this afternoon from Dr. Marty updating on the coronavirus, but I'd like to ask him to share a few more pieces of information with those who are in attendance here tonight.
Well, thank you, Mr. Todd. We're certainly in unusual times, and so I just want to take a few minutes, please bear with me, but I think it's important that we update. I think it's important that we are, we're all working together, and I want to compliment our leaders in our district, who I think have been doing a really great job, our principals and others, in certainly listening and communicating with our community and certainly our parents and students. So, we are certainly planning and responding to the coronavirus and trying to do, you know, a daily necessary update, and we did send out, as Mr. Todd said, our third communications. We are trying to keep parents and staff informed as much as possible, and it's a rapidly changing health concern, which the CDC has now labeled as a global pandemic. So, we are certainly all in some way dealing with this in our unique times. So, let me just, real quickly, but bear with me, I'm going to take us through a little bit of the work we're doing. First, I want to say we are so fortunate to have a highly qualified health professionals in our district, and I particularly want to point out, and she would just stand to be recognized, Dr. Robin Wallen has just been tremendous in terms of her work. Dr. Wallen was at another meeting today, and she's been working with the St. Louis County Health Department and is monitoring all situations in the region. As of today, the public health authorities have confirmed one possible case of the virus in our area and are not recommending school closures at this time. So, again, Dr. Wallen, all of us are keeping close tabs on what recommendations are coming forth. We are continuing to work closely with the county health leaders, and will follow their guidance. We also have the ability to quickly change our plans as needed. We do have district plans in place that Dr. Wallen has updated and have shared with our leaders. The most important message right now is to continue to be one of prevention and taking appropriate safety measures such as frequent hand washing to help reduce opportunities. You saw that in our modeling here tonight with our Teachers of the Year. We are shared, we have shared a lot of information with parents and established a detailed webpage at ParkwaySchools.net that includes a wide variety of information, again, that we're updating as much as we can on a daily basis. We also want to remind parents not to send their children to school if they are sick. This is true with or without the coronavirus. Likewise, we do not want staff coming to work if they are sick. We are asking parents to call in as soon as possible to report their child's absence and to report any specific symptoms that we ought to be aware of. Of particular importance right now is guidance heading into spring break. We know many people, both staff and parents, will be traveling, and we encourage everyone to use healthy precautions in their travels. We also put additional plans in place to increase the disinfection of our schools and buses. Excuse me. Students are being given more opportunities to wash their hands during the school day and in places where access to soap and water is limited. We are trying to use alcohol-based hand sanitizer is also available. Custodians at all grade levels are wiping down high-touch surface areas. We've got great cooperation from Mr. Ralph Nies, our operations director. We're giving it special attention to tables, doorknobs, handrails, and drinking fountains on a regular basis. We've recently added more disinfection of school buses and cafeteria checkout lines. We also have plans in place for deep disinfection of our schools over the spring break starting next week. Many people have asked, what's next? Well, that, we of course can't answer that for sure. That's a difficult question, but we do have plans in place if we continue to see an increased number of possible cases in our region. Our work has mostly focused on planning and prevention at this point, but if needed, we will move to a response phase in our plan, which could include an increase in social distancing strategies and/or canceling or postponing certain events and activities. In the event we need to close school for an extended time, we are making plans for an alternative methods of instruction via email learning, by e-learning if other areas, if the need arises, I should say. And I just want to say, we spent a good portion of today meeting with our teaching, learning, and accountability leaders, and we have another meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning, and we may have some information coming forth in the event that we do really need to move to a closure, but again, we're certainly going to try our best to stay in session, but indeed, that may be out of our control. Moving forward, we will continue to monitor the situation and respond and communicate with our community as needs arise. The health and safety of our students and staff is our top priority, and we've worked diligently to keep them safe. Finally, I'd like to note that the Missouri Department of Health activated a statewide public hotline today for citizens needing guidance regarding the virus. That number is 877-435-8411. Again, 877-435-8411. The hotline is being operated by medical professionals and is available 24 hours a day. Anyone believes that they have been exposed to the virus or if they are expecting, experiencing, I should say, symptoms, please call the St. Louis County Department of Health hotline, which is 314-615-2660. Thank you for allowing me to go through the details. We are certainly, again, under the guidance of Dr. Wallen and many others that are stepping up, whether that's our operations folks in the cleaning arena, but also want to compliment the great work of our communications department, Paul Tandy, Annie Dickerson in particular, who has really been doing most of the work to make sure we're communicating accurate information out to our public. And again, we are, as a district, going to keep the health and safety of everyone of prime importance, and we're going to monitor things very, very closely. Board members, thank you for your support and your understanding, and at this time, unless there's any questions by you, Jeff, that's a statement, but again, please do not hesitate to provide any questions that you have, anyone in the audience or in our public, to us, and we'll certainly respond as quickly as we can. Thank you for the opportunity to report.
Thank you, Dr. Marty. So, for citizen statements, I will ask you, I will announce a name and ask you to join us at the podium. We do provide this opportunity at our meetings for citizen comment in an effort to maintain an open and respectful dialogue with our community. The public comment section is not the appropriate forum for addressing individually identifiable student and/or personnel matters, therefore due to privacy laws protecting students and employees, comments about these matters should not include personally identifiable information about particular students or employees. Members of the public, staff, and students are encouraged to use established policies and procedures for offering suggestions or addressing concerns and complaints prior to bringing the issue before the board. Please be mindful that the meetings of the board, including your statements at this podium, are broadcast and that you are responsible for any public comments you make. In lieu of a public statement, you may choose to submit your comments to the board in writing. Also, due to time constraints and the need to complete the primary responsibilities of our meeting agenda, we cannot respond during the meeting, so you will receive a response from us in writing. We are always available to have an open dialogue outside of our meetings and can be reached by email or phone using our contact information on the Parkway website. So, first up, we have, joining us tonight, Susan Herman. Sure.
Okay. My name is Susan Herman, and I live at Three Wheel Right Court, and I am here tonight to express my concern over the district's choosing not to replace Dr. Daryl Diggs's position as an assistant principal at Parkway South High School. I'm asking the board to reconsider this decision and keep all five AP positions at South High. As a mother of four South Area students, two of them currently at the high school, I am constantly faced with the fact that while my children all desire to be treated fairly, this doesn't always mean they're treated the same. Parkway desires to make the main four high schools the same by going to grade-level APs without regard for fairness and equity. A consequence of South High only having four assistant principals means that, on average, South High's APs will have over 400 students on their caseload, where West will have about 350, Central about 300, and North about 275. That means that South High's assistant principals will be responsible for over 140 more students than the average at North High. How is this equitable? How is this fair to the students at Parkway South? If 1,600 students is the district's magic number for dropping down to four APs, then it would make sense that 1,200 would bring a school down to three APs. Please understand that I'm not looking to short-change North or Central that are at that 1,200 mark, but your numbers don't make sense, and I expect Parkway to make it possible for my children to be able to access their principal if needed. And at this point, South High isn't down to that magic number yet. I believe that safety will become a problem for South High with the reduction of APs, and the district is acknowledging this concern by providing one TA to help with the assistant principal's supervision responsibilities. By my calculations, the time that this will give each AP is about 40 minutes a day. This means that with the addition of 25% more of their building responsibilities, about 83 students to their caseload, six to seven more teachers to evaluate, plus additional support staff to evaluate, all of this is expected to be handled in about 40 minutes a day. I think this is unreasonable, and we need another person in the building that's allowed to handle the actual workload and responsibilities of an AP. Parkway South has always touted itself on how well relationships are built between adults and students, and you are asking the South High community to sacrifice this quality for the sake of the high schools to be the same. I'm asking you to please reconsider this decision. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Ellen Ewing.
My name is Ellen Ewing. I am here to also express my concern over the district's decision not to replace Dr. Daryl Diggs's assistant principal position at Parkway South High School. Parkway South's enrollment for next year is projected to be the highest in the district. If only four assistant principals remain, their caseload will increase by nearly 100 students per AP. As the parent of two children, a freshman at South and a seventh grader at Southwest Middle, I would like some explanation as to why this position is not being filled. Each AP has a myriad of responsibilities in addition to meeting the various needs of nearly 400 students each day. What is the plan to address how these four remaining administrators will tackle their increased workload, from students and their issues to the increase in staff that they will have to evaluate and manage? Perhaps the bigger question I have is why is there no transparency regarding this decision? It impacts my children and their experience throughout high school, and yet I struggle as a parent and a taxpayer to get answers that explain why the position is not being replaced. There are no apparent benefits to the staff or students at Parkway South, and Dr. H has been unable to answer the how and why being asked. If the resources from the outgoing AP's income are being diverted to the district at large, while my school is dealing with a higher student-to-staff ratio, I would like to know why. The mission of the Parkway School District is to ensure that all students are capable, curious, caring, and confident learners, but if their needs are not being met, if the needs of the teachers and the staff who serve them are not being met, how can Parkway ensure that? We do not need to perfectly mirror what the other high schools do, but the discrepancy in student-to-staff ratio that would happen at South and the other high schools is glaring. The talk of adding additional personnel feels like an afterthought, as it was only brought up within the last week or two. Where is the proactive approach that Parkway prides itself on? I feel like Parkway has made this decision arbitrarily and is not looking out in the long-term best interest for the students and staff at Parkway South High School. I would ask you to please reconsider your decision and allow South to keep five assistant principal positions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Todd, Board of Education, Dr. Marty, and Ms. Stover. My name is Kim Midetskoff. I am here to represent myself as a teacher, my family, and the over 300 listed parents, teachers, and community members on the petition I provided to you, who would like the board to reconsider the discontinuation of spring parent-teacher conferences. In the last month, I met with my daughter's third-grade teacher and school principal, six of my other daughter's middle-school teachers, and almost 40 parents as a teacher at Parkway South, all because conferences existed. We shared concerns, celebrated successes, and formed relationships and trust. This is how you build a community. Parents need to meet with the adults who truly care about their children, which is part of Parkway's mission statement, isn't it? The over 300 people I am here to represent value face-to-face meetings to share examples of work, growth, and identified areas for improvement. These people are invested in our district, in the work of our teachers and their children. Are these really the people we should be turning away? And let us not forget those parents who don't ordinarily enter our buildings, but do so simply because the conference structure exists. We need to encourage parents to come into our buildings more, not less. In today's day and age where people are talking less and emailing and texting more, our district does not need to contribute to the problem. If the district truly doesn't value regular in-person communication, then why are we here every month, meeting face-to-face? The current conference structure allows teachers to meet with many parents in a short period of time. Parents who have conflicts are rescheduled as needed. Removing this structure places an undue burden squarely on the shoulders of teachers. Proposing that teachers can have multiple conferences during their planning time and that parents would find that convenient is unrealistic. Parents who have to travel long distances would be most inconvenienced, and what if a parent needs to meet with more than one teacher or has more than one child? What a scheduling nightmare. Infinite campus and progress reports do not tell the whole story, and conferences are not just for students who are struggling. In fact, without spring conferences, middle-school and high-school parents would never meet second semester teachers at all. This decision discourages collaboration and the teamwork we so desperately need between home and school, it erodes the values of relationships and community, and I ask you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Clay.
My name is John Clay. I'm from Henry Elementary. Back in December, I filed a grievance, and with this particular grievance, myself and the coworker, we both pretty much filed the same thing. And that being said, due to that grievance, you all allow your HR department to bring in an investigator outside, right? And then we had one inside as well that did an investigation. That being said, that is considered impartial and conflict of interest, because for the simple reason is, it's no telling exactly how they are manipulating the paperwork. But that being said, I still say that the young lady that came in and did the investigation, she found out truth, because all the paperwork that I gave her, she said she had no recollection of. So, I surprised her with the paperwork and documentation that I had. But that being said, I waited three months. Two months, I didn't get no meeting. I hadn't even been spoken to. The third month, out of that whole month, she had all the information that she needed, all the documentation there, didn't hear from her until the end of that month. So, that there gave her plenty of time to do what she pleases with, that reply back that she got from the investigator. Now, it's, what gets me about the whole thing is, out of all the investigators out of the state of Missouri, you all let her choose the one that is her friend, and she worked with the lady prior. Now, see, I know she may not understand how I found out all this information, but you'll be amazed, the people that I know. But that being said, I still say, what went on with my coworker, we both had the same thing. I was treated totally different from a coworker. He had three meetings, and we both had counseling, but he still got his meeting. He got...
of the Board of Education as scheduled for March 11th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Next, I would like to invite Dr. Chelsea Watson, Deputy Superintendent, to introduce a new administrator.
This evening, I have the pleasure of introducing to you four new building principals. Dr. Melissa Helwig, who will be at Barrett's Elementary School, Mrs. Kira Lackey, who will be joining the McKelvey Elementary School team, Kathy Lorenz, who will be the principal of Central Middle School, and Toby McQuary, who will be the principal of South Middle School for the upcoming school year. So, we're going to go one by one, and so when I call your name, please come and join me, and we're going to start with Dr. Helwig. All right. Dr. Helwig is currently in her third year as the assistant principal of Barrett's Elementary School. Her leadership experience includes time as an administrative intern in the Webster School District, and she had time as a math teacher and a science teacher, and she began her career in Webster 13 years ago. Just a little history, but here's the fun part. During the interview process, we allowed parents, administrators, teachers to provide us feedback, and I want to share a little bit about what they said. She's a futuristic preparer of our learners. She celebrates diversity. She has a social justice lens and has great ideas to improve this area. She's caring. She is concerned about others, always respectful, wants to help students and teachers grow. There's a culture of trust, growth, and a growth mindset. She recognizes that kids make mistakes and sees kids and teachers as individuals. She's a collaborative leader who genuinely listens to all voices and makes decisions using a trauma, equity, and restorative lens. She encourages people to move from a safe space to a brave space. And lastly, the enthusiasm with teachers and support staff is contagious. Please welcome the next principal of Barrett's Elementary School, Dr. Melissa Helwig.
I wasn't expecting that, so that is awesome to hear all that amazing feedback. I am really appreciative of the opportunity to continue my career in Parkway. At one point, I thought I'd always stay in Webster Groves, loved it there, and got the opportunity to work under Kelly Morton, and just fell in love with Barrett's, fell in love with Parkway, and love working here, so I'm just excited to continue that journey as we begin to move forward. So, thank you.
Will Kira Lackey please join me at the podium? Kira has been the assistant principal at Paramount since 2014. She began her career in Parkway as a sixth-grade teacher. Since then, she has also served Parkway in different capacities. She's been a literacy coach, an instructional coach, and curriculum facilitator. During the interview process, we sought feedback, and here are just a few comments from the folks who participated in the process. She is a relationship builder and a servant leader. She communicated the importance of building children's social and emotional learning, not only academics, which we can focus on too much at times. Kira has a strong background in curriculum and instruction, and she is relationship-driven. Kira demonstrated a strong work ethic and that she's a champion of teachers and students. She's willing to listen to all voices and is not afraid of conflict. I like the fact that she seems detail-oriented and process-driven. These are great things. She spoke to diversity, her own racial journey of reflection, and has a handle on how to work and help. Many cultures thrive. Last comment I want to share with you, this person said, "I am most impressed about her relational focus and heart to serve. This appeals to me so much. I see a humbleness within her great experiences that I think would pay off in a great functioning school." Please welcome Kira Lackey, the next principal of McKelvey Elementary School.
Thank you, Board of Education and Dr. Marty. I am very honored and privileged to have you all put your trust in me and your faith in me as the next leader of McKelvey Elementary. Dr. Cohen has paved a beautiful path for me to pick up the torch where she left off, and I think tonight, most of all, I want to recognize my husband and one of our three children are in the crowd. My family has been with me every step of the way. My family has been with me every step of the way. My husband has been with me every step of the way since I began teaching in 1994 at Carmen Trails Elementary. So, three degrees later, and three children later, and lots and lots of years of long hours, I could not do this without him. He makes my work possible. He makes me able to love what I do without feeling like I'm sacrificing those who I love more than anything. So, again, his headline is, "Do what you gotta do. We're okay. We're okay." So, he covers me in all those late hours, and I can't thank him enough. But thank you all for this opportunity, and I'm excited and privileged and honored to continue the work at McKelvey. Thank you.
Next, Dr. Kathy Lorenz, will you please join me? Dr. Lorenz is well-known in Parkway and across the region as an experienced administrator, serving in leadership roles for more than 15 years. Prior to Parkway, she held a principalship in both Hancock Place and Rockwood School Districts. She holds a doctorate in educational leadership from Maryville, and a master's from the University of Missouri-Columbia, and a BA in political science from the University of Kentucky. So, I'm sure you want to hear what they had to say about Dr. Lorenz. She's positive and approachable. She is people and student-oriented. She looks at the why before acting or making decisions. She places value on personal relationships, values input from staff, and wants to hear from all stakeholders. Kathy is very passionate and proud of Parkway Central Middle School and the district. She has given a lot of thought to what it would be like for her to take on this new role. She cares deeply for the students and staff, and wants to continue to keep the reputation of our school at a very high level. What impressed me the most about Kathy was her poise, confidence, and passion for Central Middle School. I really like how she wants to hear students' voices, and she wants to get to know parents. The last comment that I'm going to share with you is, her energy and excitement for Central Middle. I think she would be a wonderful fit for the future of our school. She is ready to take this school to the next level. Please welcome Dr. Kathy Lorenz, the next principal of Central Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Thank you, Dr. Marty, and members of the board. I am very excited. But I have to thank you twice, because had you not picked Dr. Michael Boggs as the leadership on Superintendent Action Team, then I wouldn't have had this opportunity. But really, truly, Dr. Boggs grabbed me here about four years ago and brought me to this wonderful family of Central Middle. And I have loved it, and I am excited to continue the journey here. One of our words, especially with Character Ed when it comes to that, and continue to put the banners around the area of promising practices and things like that. So, very excited. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Toby McQuary, please join me at the podium. Toby will be our next principal of Parkway South Middle School. Toby is currently an Assistant Principal at South Middle School, where he has served for the last five years. Prior to that, he was a curriculum coordinator in Parkway. He supported students and teachers across the district in social studies, math, and science programs. Toby began his career as a social studies teacher in Jennings, where he served for 10 years. And what did folks have to say about Toby? Toby understands teachers, challenges, and owns that he has a role in helping. Toby listens and is accepting of constructive criticism. He is willing to have the hard conversations. He has a clear path, vision on how to engage others in collaborative decision-making. Toby's very knowledgeable about instruction, assessment, discipline, collaboration, and community building. He's personable and friendly. He's able to enter a room with confidence and grace. The last thing I want to share about Toby, someone said that he is genuine, caring, hardworking, and an action-oriented person. Toby is reflective, compassionate, and cares about all people. Please welcome the next principal of South Middle School, Toby McQuary.
Thank you so much for your confidence in me as the next principal of South Middle. I'm grateful to Amy Branson, who's been about the best mentor that a person could have. For my first five years in Parkway, I spent every month sitting in the front row with Dr. Meredith or Kathy Blackmore as a coordinator, and a lot of times presenting to the board or sitting up there working in the back rows. But, you know, it's humbling to hear people say kind words about you. And here's the invitation to the board and to all those present tonight. And that is, we had a staff member last week who suddenly lost her husband. It was completely unexpected. The visitation was this evening, and the funeral's tomorrow. And it caused me to reflect upon how often am I telling those around me that I love that I love them? And when I hear these words that folks say about me, I'm grateful to hear them. But I would invite each of us to go home this evening and to think about those that are in our lives. And don't delay, don't wait to tell them how much we love them and how much they mean to us. I'm ready to go to work. Thanks.
In conclusion, I just want to say that I am very excited to work with these leaders in this new capacity. It is so nice that we have leaders in Parkway that are ready to take that next step and lead as building principals. And I have every confidence, the most confidence in all four of these incoming principals. And I know they're going to do great things, and they are mission-driven, and look forward to their leadership. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Todd, I just want to say, congratulations to anybody who participated, but particularly to Chelsea. We take the selection of principals really seriously, because leading schools is a challenge these days with the demands on principals. I think principal demands have just kind of exploded. So, we really are very, take our time and are really selective in who we put in those roles. And you heard four people tonight that were really excited to join us. And you will note that they've already been part of the Parkway family. They've been assistants. We did have all these roles opened up to not only internal but external. And all these people surfaced as our top candidates, and we're proud of that because they've already proven themselves in Parkway. So, congratulations to all of them. Thank you, Chelsea, for all the work you put into this, and Amy Joyce, and so many others that were involved in the process. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, April 1st, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM right here at Central Middle School. Next, we'll have board liaison reports.
I'll just share two quick things, two positive things. I got the chance to attend the Rise Up event at South High recently. I've attended before. It's a good opportunity. And I think it's a good touchstone for me especially to learn what's going on in our kids' lives right now, and the fact that the vulnerability of both the students in their sharing, the staff in their sharing, and a program too. It's a tough day. It's a very tough day to learn what's really going on outside the classroom. So, it's a great opportunity to kind of see what's going on in the lives of our kids. I'm hopeful then too, we actually have a Parkway West student attend this year, and maybe they can take that program back to the Parkway West too. So, we're hopeful. And then the other thing I got to do recently, just yesterday actually, was I got to go with Dr. Kevin Beckner and some folks from Fern Ridge, and folks from the Mosaic Academy, to go visit a personalized learning workshop-ish. We got to visit a couple of schools. And I'll say, just the opportunities we're going to have here in Parkway when personalized learning comes in next year, it's going to give our students more choices. And I think the focus upon the student learner and that approach that we can take and giving certain kids a different opportunity to learn, a different way to learn, and give a different environment too, is going to be a positive approach that we take here at Parkway. And I think we're going to take some of the ideas we learned up in Milwaukee and bring them back to Parkway and make it personalized learning in the Parkway way. That's kind of done it a little bit. But it's going to be exciting to see what comes together. And I think with the elementary level, the mid, and the high school, there's something still to work through, but I'm excited to see what all comes about and the opportunities we're going to give our kids.
I'll just mention a few things that I did this month. I was able to attend the planning meeting for the St. Louis School Board's Professional Learning Community. I've just joined this group. And this is a group of school board members from across the area who get together a couple times a year to learn about issues that are important to all school districts. I'm excited that our next general meeting is going to be in early May. And there, we're going to be learning about a couple of different early childhood education initiatives that are taking place in the St. Louis area, that will expand opportunities for early childhood education. So, I look forward to being able to bring back a report on that. Related to personalized learning, I actually, we had some students from Kettle Moraine come down here, Milwaukee area. And I went to the presentation at West High School. Students did the entire presentation, and I was so impressed with them. They showed us what they're doing as far as designing their own learning, and taking some of those ideas from that school, I'm excited about what can happen in Parkway, because these students were amazing. They were just amazing. They had more poise than I've ever seen in students, because they designed what they're doing in their school. They got up and talked about it. And I just enjoyed it so much and can't wait to see the possibilities here. Finally, just as much as a parent, as a school board member, last night, I actually went to a PTO meeting at my old school, Claymont Elementary. And I wanted to bring it up because I know, turn to your PTOs, because some of them are doing really great things. At Claymont, they are making a specific effort to bring in speakers to talk about issues that matter to parents. Last night, we had Heather Fleming from In Purpose Educational Services come in and talk about difficult conversations around race with your children. And it was a great presentation. The other thing Claymont's been doing, that I hope other schools are doing, they're providing childcare at their PTO meetings so that they can expand the attendance. And I just wanted to give them a shout-out, because they have really good attendance. And it's been that way for a while, because they're providing, I think it's the Key Club from West High School that's providing childcare during their PTO meetings. And so, check out what your PTOs are doing, because some of them are trying some new things. And I think that they're really providing some great services to parents.
I will just quickly mention STEM Fest from last weekend, and thank you to our STEM coordinators for putting that on. I took my family there Friday night, and they requested all day Saturday to go back, and were unhappy with the fact that that didn't work in our schedule. So, thanks for a great event. I think it was really pretty well-attended, and people seemed to really have a good time. So, thank you for that.
I had a relatively busy Parkway-related month. This past weekend, I took part in the Barrett's PTO-sponsored trivia night along with Kristy and Dr. Marty, just because we thought it was the classy thing to do, we allowed another table to win. Last week, I was also invited to speak to a doctoral class, along with some other board members from schools around the area, with some teachers and other folks that are pursuing a doctorate degree in education with a goal towards being an administrator or superintendent. The reason I bring it up is, there was a lot of questions from the students to various board members, and it sort of highlighted for me that while Parkway has its challenges, there are other districts deal with certain issues that we really don't have to struggle with in Parkway as a district and as a board. So, it was nice to see that we're doing some things well. We also had, last week, the legislative luncheon, where we jointly with Pattonville School District, meet with legislators in the area and discuss issues that affect education. Those meetings can be somewhat depressing in some ways when we talk about some of the legislation in Jeff City that affects education. But it's nice to know that our district and our partner districts and some of the legislators whose areas overlap with those geographical areas, our interests are aligned. And even though it's a difficult task, that we're still fighting for public education. And finally, I wanted to give a compliment to our communications department. If you are anything like me, all day long, you get notifications on your phone from everyone, from your credit card company to the St. Louis Cardinals, to anybody else about the ongoing health issue in the world. And I think that Parkway's response has been exemplary. Paul, and Dr. Marty, and the entire communications department have done a wonderful job of providing useful information that isn't, you know, sky is falling, but things that are being transparent as much as is possible while providing useful information to the families and the residents of the districts. I just want to compliment our department on a job well-done in that respect.
Thank you. I also want to add my appreciation to the communications that have been going out as well. I do want to recognize, we have a number of Parkway South students that have joined us tonight. No, there's more than South. So, there's... So, some Spark students. But these are all future educators, I understand, potentially future educators. So, thank you for being here. You got to see some of our top educators in the district tonight. So, maybe one day, one or two or three of you will be one of those ones coming across our stage. So, thanks for being here. In the last month, just in the last week, I attended Special Olympics events at both South and West. Those were extremely well-run. I think South was their 25th anniversary. That was pretty exciting. The other thing that we'll be celebrating a 25th anniversary of next year is the Spirit of Excellence program, which Kevin and I attended a couple of weeks ago. And that was very well-attended. And it's just a great evening to honor some kids who are really excelling in the classroom. So, next year, I think that it would only be appropriate, being a 25th anniversary, that the entire board would be there. So, let's mark our calendars. I will also mention that I had a great evening. Dr. Marty and I sat at the All District Orchestra Concert last night and heard some wonderful music by students from all across the district. And those events are always enjoyable. Last thing I want to mention is, we had a visit today, actually at this building, but we had students from across the district get to participate in a visit by the Vision Van. And if you don't know what the Vision Van is, it's kind of like the bookmobile for eyeglasses. So, the Vision Van is a group, it's the eye charity of Mid-America, and they come around to schools all across the region, and even as far down south as Bonterre, and way far north, and over to the east side, and way out even further west than we are. But they provided today, they provided glasses, free glasses, eyeglasses for over two dozen kids. A lot of these were kids that maybe had glasses that the prescription had expired, and their families couldn't afford to replace them. Some cases, there were kids that were getting glasses for the very first time. And I got a chance to speak with some of those kids, and they were, you could see the excitement in their eyes even more clearly now. But they were so excited to be able to see clearly, and I couldn't help but leave there thinking about how we just eliminated a barrier for some of these kids in the classroom. And so, it was a really special program that we partner with them. And kudos to our nurses across the district who coordinate this event and all the vision screening that goes into preparing for this and selecting those students who might have that need.
I just want to say again, kudos to the nurses, and they also do work around oral health. And so, those barriers that you're talking about, you know, whether it's, you know, toothaches and people can't, I mean, that's really important to learning. So, Robin and all the people, please pass on our thanks for all that extra work. You covered most. The only thing I would add, that I participated on Saturday, was the first time I've had the opportunity to do this. Amsel runs a early pre-college program called Bridges, and this is for ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th graders. Really, the idea is to get first-generation young people to experience a college, so, a pre-college program. So, from about November through February, on Saturdays, students give up their time, and they get instruction on various content areas, but also what it means to be a college student. And we had about 70 students from Parkway that were honored, had a breakfast at the America Center on Saturday morning. I don't know if he's still around, but Kevin Martin actually is, I found out, I didn't realize, this is one of the instructors, the math instructors in that program for several years. And so, it's really neat to see one of our principals that had been involved in that. I just will add also to the students in the Spark, on April 2nd, and board members, you might want to put this on your calendar, Commissioner Van Even is going to speak to the Spark Teach and Learning students. They have invited her. She accepted the invitation. And I saw her a couple of weeks ago, and she's very excited to come and talk to prospective students. So, I'm really excited to have Margie, Margie Van Even, our state commissioner, experience our students. And Margie's come to our Spark program in other areas, and so it's great. She's given up some time to come... up some time to come and, that's, I believe, is that a Thursday or Thursday or Friday, right? So, put that, put that on her calendar and I will give more details later, but she is really excited about that. She came up to me, just said, "I'm so excited, I'm going to be talking to all these prospective young teachers and in the day and era where we really need to get more young people interested in teaching, I'm excited to see all these folks here tonight because we really need to continue the, the good tradition of public education and it's getting, getting young people excited about teaching." And they're excited. They're enthusiastic about the work they're doing.
The next project, Parkway Steering Committee meeting will be held on Monday, March 30th at 5:30 PM at Parkway Central Middle School. Next, we have a number of action items. In addition to the addendums that I mentioned before, we have 28 action items and we have all had a chance to review those over the past week or so. So, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the March 11th, 2020 Board Materials?
Salute.
Second. Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6-0. Next up, we have a policy review that is policy GCBDA dot BP. It's professional staff short-term leaves. We have been reviewing this as a board. Do any of the board members have any questions about this policy? Okay. Having no questions, this policy will be up for approval at our next board meeting. Next, we have a report. Oh, there he is right there. I'd like to introduce Mike Seppi. He is a Director of Community Education for the Parkway-Rockwood Community Education Program and he's here to give us an update.
Good evening. Members of the board, Dr. Marty, thanks so much for your time tonight. Hard to believe it was a year ago that I was standing here wishing us all a happy five-year anniversary. And now, we're on year six. So, it's great to be back here again tonight and share some information about community Some of these slides you have seen before, so I won't spend a whole lot of time on them. This one just is a reiteration of the various program areas that make up community ed. So, there are seven different program areas. You'll recall that we do provide services for youth families and adults of all ages. As we look back at last year, it was a banner year in community ed. And so, as I mentioned, the partnership's been going on for six years. What you have here are three years' worth of history to show you how participation rates are going. So, that top line there addresses seats filled. You'll recall, seats filled does not mean unique individuals because someone might take multiple sessions of a program. We count seats filled. And so, I'm pleased to announce that we continue to trend in the right direction and here in FY19, we passed 50,000 seats filled for the first time. A couple of highlights, while we have multiple, many, many, many programs, I did want to just call attention to a few program areas that I thought you might be interested. Adventure Club, which of course is our largest program, the before and after care program. You will see that that continues to increase in terms of participants at, at all of the Parkway Elementary Schools. The column on the right does show year-to-date, so you'll already see that year-to-date, and this was as of about 10 days ago when I had to submit this report, we were already ahead of where we ended total participation from last year. And then, I did want to call attention real quick to the next two lines, kind of group them together a little bit, but these are the two lines that address programming that we offer for adults. Much of our programming for adults happens to be, I would say at this point, age 50 and older. We certainly have folks of all ages, but you will see that we continue to provide services to more and more adults. The Gold Card program, you'll recall, is for residents age 60 and older and they get access unlimited discounts towards community ed programs throughout the year. And so, very pleased to see that those numbers continue to trend upward. And I will just say, thanks, I know I saw a few of you at the Summer Expo just a few weeks ago here at West High and we just blew the attendance out of the water this year. So, we were previously at 1,900 and we had over 2,700 people come through the door in about a four-hour period. It was great. It was really a great event, so thanks to those of you that were able to stop by. I always like to give this slide whenever I'm giving a presentation about community ed because it gives a perspective on, on just how far of a reach the program has. So, today alone, in community ed on March 11th, we have over 4,000 participants. A lot of those are Adventure Club between Parkway and Rockwood. We have over 4,000 participants in programs at over 40 locations. Our youngest participant is 10 months old in a swim program and I just had to pick them both because they were so close. Our oldest participants, 81-years-old in a country line dance class and 82-years-old in, in aqua aerobics class. So, that just is a reminder in terms of the breadth of reach that we have. You'll recall, community ed is about creating connections with all residents of the, of district residents and I think you'll see in those numbers that we are continuing to create those relationships. We do have a program that we run throughout the year, I always like to highlight this. We know that there is so much that goes into making community ed programs run and a lot of times, that involves Parkway employees who aren't necessarily community ed employees and we can't do what we do without them. So, throughout this school year, each month, we rotate back and forth between a Parkway and Rockwood school and we just go out and simply say thank you to someone who is really making us work. And so, these are the three folks since I was here last year in Parkway that we've been able to recognize and I can tell you, there's probably 10 to 20 more right behind them. So, it's really a pleasure just to go out and tell them how much we appreciate what they do. We call it the Community Ed Champion Award. So, I'm really excited to spend a minute here talking about what the future looks like in community ed. So, there is research out there that shows, starting in 2020, which by my watch says was three months ago, customer experience is expected to surpass price and program is the number-one differentiator when, when customers are choosing how to, what to do with their time, how to spend their discretionary dollars. And so, a lot of thought went in, a lot of, there's a lot more research behind that. What I will tell you, which you might not expect, the reason, one of the main reasons that customer experience is now jumping forward in, in every industry is thanks to Amazon. So, Amazon continues to make the way, the 60% of US households that have an Amazon Prime account, they continue to make their lives more convenient and more easy and that is bleeding over into expectations and everything that we do. I can tell you, I went and filled my car with gas tonight before I came here and I had to hit a button to say it was a credit card, then I had to hit it in my zip code, then I had to tell them I didn't want a car wash, then I had to tell them I didn't want a receipt. And the point of that is, none of that's hard, but because we're becoming so conditioned to expect convenience, you just go, "Man, why is this so difficult?" And so, we know that Amazon is not a competitor of ours, but they are affecting how we operate in community ed. And so, what we want to do and what we have been doing over the last year, and I will share on the next slide, what we're continuing to do is making sure that we're providing a quality customer experience for, for our folks who choose to spend their discretionary dollars with community ed. So, we know that in what we do in lifelong learning, there are several factors that, that can make us successful. It's providing convenience, variety, affordability, innovation, and being accessible. And so, when we look at over the last year, ways that we've tried to impact those areas in community ed, these are some of those areas. We've centralized our operations staff. So, now, as a, as a parent, if I have a question, I no longer have to tell my story three different times to three different people because I have a question about sports or Adventure Club or the Bablaur Outdoor Education Center. And then internally, our employees and our staff know that they have one place to go to get service. And so, that has created tremendous efficiencies in how we operate and how we're able to provide service, not only internally, but externally. Really excited, you might remember me telling you when I was here last year, our top need over the last 18 months has been adding an inclusion specialist to help us make sure that we're providing the correct and the appropriate levels of service to everyone who participates in our programs. So, that position started in July and I want to give you just one example of how it's already had an impact. In the fall, we had a Mighty Mites basketball program with your little guys and it runs about six weeks, once a week. That one class, we had five participants with hearing impairments. Four of them needed assisted listening devices, one of them needed an interpreter. Our inclusion specialists immediately jumped in, talked with parents, talked with instructors, talked with SSD audiology. We have an agreement with Desk Services LLC and we were able to meet those needs. And we were able to talk with those parents afterwards and in fact, I even think we put something on social media with some, some videos, just the parents appreciating what we're able to provide because that's the right thing to do. And so, this position has really, as I talk about becoming more efficient and making sure we're better serving our customers, this is just one example of how this position has really allowed us to, to improve by leaps and bounds in a short amount of time. If you've been on our website recently, that has been redesigned. What I want to touch on that, that was redesigned based on feedback from parents. So, again, hearing from our customers and our residents saying two things to us. "What you do is great, but I need to find out what you do for kids." Or, "What you do is great, but I need to find out what's in my area." So, now, when you go to our website, there's two ways you can get to that information quickly. We differentiate right away, are you here for youth, families, or adult programming? Once you go into that, we've broken down between Parkway and Rockwood, we've broken down all the municipalities into seven different neighborhoods that we call them. So, think Baldwin-Manchester as a neighborhood. And so, as a parent, I can go in and I can click on my neighborhood and it'll immediately take you to all the programs that we have available, whether that's for youth, families, or adults. So, we're trying to just provide convenience. We know that families have a lot of other options beyond community ed when they're looking for programs for lifelong learning. We want them to choose Parkway-Rockwood Community Ed. We have done focus groups to learn how to get better. I will just mention, for adults, we held five focus groups throughout Parkway and Rockwood over the last year. And adults, it was fantastic. We've, we probably talked with, gosh, probably 50, 50 different adults who, who gave us great suggestions on, on how we can better serve their needs. So, we're now in the process of analyzing that with rolling out some of those changes coming in the fall. And one example, I'll just give you a simple example, we're hearing from adults, "We love what you do, I can't commit to a six-week class." So, think about a photography class. It's six weeks in length, but if we're able to say, week one, we're going to focus on outdoor photography. Week two, we're going to focus on, on, on sports. We're able to allow people to sign up for which weeks they want within a six-week class or the six-week class and now it becomes more convenient and meets their needs. So, we're trying to learn how we can better meet their needs and then provide those programs. And then, the last thing I want to mention is our Gold Card program, which I talked about before. That is for residents age 60 or older. We have really redesigned that in an effort to better connect with, with the audience both in Parkway and Rockwood that are 60 and older. We have increased discount opportunities. We send them birthday greetings because we know when the birthday is. We send them printed newsletters, we send them e-newsletters that are targeted just to that audience, letting them know. We often do a highlight on, on a Gold Card member that took a program, we highlight an instructor and we let them know what's coming up, opportunities in their area. So, again, this is about creating convenience, it's about improving the customer experience. And so, everything we do right now is centered around that and we're going to continue to research opportunities to improve that experience going forward. I'm really excited about this, mostly because I get to bring two other people up to do some talking and I don't have to stand here and do all the talking. But, before I do that, I do want to just take a minute to touch on, I know Dr. Marty spent some time talking about the COVID-19 and, and what that looks like in community ed. So, we are continuing to follow guidance provided from both school districts. We will, if and when needed, make adjustments to our programs, whatever that needs to look like. We will be as flexible and we will make as many adjustments as we need to. So, we'll continue to look to both Robin, her counterpart, in, in Rockwood and of course, Dr. Marty and Dr. Miles and, and make adjustments where needed. So, with that, I do want to call my friends, Jen AA, as I've learned, she's been called now, and Stephanie Valley up to join me. But, we're really excited and I'm going to let them do a lot of this talking, but you, you are aware of the Bablaur Outdoor Education Center, which is a facility that we run out in Bablaur State Park. One of the main purposes of that is to bring learning from the classroom to the outdoors. So, we do that a couple of different ways, lots of different trips. I wanted to highlight two before we jump into the new one that's coming. STEM in the Smokies, which is a trip for Parkway, just for Parkway eighth graders where they're actually going to leave this Sunday and spend next week down at the Tree Mountain Institute in Smoky Mountain National Park, doing all kinds of outdoor experiential learning. They're also going to go whitewater rafting, it's going to be great. So, I, what I've heard a rumor that there's going to be an Instagram takeover, so check the Parkway Instagram next week for that. And then, the next thing, this was actually brought to us from the social studies coordinators from both Parkway and Rockwood, asking if we could help coordinate a trip for the next presidential inauguration. And so, we are happy to say that that is out there, registration is underway and we're looking forward to that come next January. So, with that, I do want to just kind of turn to the exciting new STEM outdoor experience for Parkway students that I have had the pleasure of getting to know Stephanie and Jen over the last several months and I'm sure you already know how great they are, but I will just reiterate, they're great. And so, it has been such a pleasure working with them and I'm going to let them share some information on, on an exciting new program.
So, when Stephanie, Stephanie and I think about the STEM experiences that we want to provide for our students, it's important that we look for opportunities, that we can increase STEM for all and help students meet mission, the Parkway mission and vision. And that really speaks, STEM really speaks to application and transfer of the content that they're learning when they're in school. And how could we eliminate the barrier of STEM experiences outside of the school day that some of our students are fortunate enough to have, is by providing those experiences during the school day. So, guaranteeing a culminating STEM experience for all students, K8 is one way that we're going to do that. So, we asked, we shared our Stage 1 curriculum with Parkway-Rockwood Community Ed and we asked them, in essence, to design an experience that they could offer our students that aligns with our guaranteed curriculum, that would give our students the opportunity to transfer and apply the things that they're learning in the classroom and kind of give a, we're an end-of-the-year, like, experience, STEM experience for all of our students. And so, we don't want to do too much talking, it's on the slides, we're going to just do a high-level overview of the program that has been, that came out of this relationship. Oh, do you want to, okay. So, timeline, we started talking at the beginning of this school year and then we, community ed did the legwork for us, they created the experiences. Then, we brought it back to elementary teachers. I had a science action team this year where we worked on sustainability and those teachers provided feedback on the experiences that they designed. And we're expected, we're going to provide the experience for our students in spring of next school year for all K5 students. And then, middle school students will have their experience starting the following school year. And what it looks like, is that, yes, what it looks like in K through five, for grades K1, 2, 4, and 5, the experiences will be brought to the schools. Parkway-Rockwood Community Ed will provide the facilitators, the activities, the resources, the materials. Teachers will be there, of course, to help with supervision, but the STEM experience will happen onsite in one period of the school day. Grade 3, and well, Stephanie will speak more about middle school, grade 3 will be, have the opportunity to travel to the Outdoor Education Center, the Bablaur Outdoor Education Center, and spend an entire day dedicated to science curriculum and our, and is several STEM experiences, not just one.
So, I'm definitely not as tall as Jen, so I need to make an adjustment here. There we go. But, a little bit, a little bit of a transition then, when they go to middle school. So, we all know already, at sixth grade, there's a guaranteed experience for outdoor school for all of our sixth graders. That experience heavily focuses on life science oftentimes for students and so we really wanted to look at, so as we're looking at this experience, how can we ensure opportunities with both earth and physical science as well? In addition, we really wanted to capitalize on a transdisciplinary approach for middle school. So, really utilizing an entire team of teachers. So, how can we actually have the science, math, ELA, and social studies teacher actually helping to design those experiences together? And so, that's part of the work that'll happen next year, which is why it'll be another year out before the middle school would have that experience. But, you'll see up there as an example for that. Then, in eighth grade, they'll travel to the Bablaur Outdoor Education Center. And then, in seventh grade, it'll actually be an off, a really off-site trip to travel to Elephant Rock State Park and Johnson Shuttens for an actual extended-day experience. So, really trying to make sure that each student, you know, part of, part of why we really looked at STEM in the Smokies and, and now looking at these experiences, we know that students are able to know, understand, and love science and math and engineering and all of those, those experiences when they actually get to be out in the world experiencing them. So, it became really important for Jen and I to, to really look and say, "We really want those, those experiences to happen as soon as possible." And then, thinking about, you know, we're really the foundation before they go to high school and they start making some different decisions and choices. decisions and choices about what they like. So, they need to have had some experiences out in the world to be able to say, oh, you know what, I really enjoy earth science, or, oh, I really enjoy engineering, so really trying to give them some foundation for that.
The next slide just deals with the budget and how we're going to make it happen. The total cost of the program is up there. TLA will budget for some of it, that will live in elementary science, and then we are going to ask each family to pay $10, however, that $10 will include scholarship money, and then the $10 also assures with Parkway Community Ed that that will be the price over the course of the next three years. It accounts for, you know, materials adjustments and staffing increases, and so, we think, we think, I, as a parent in the district, I know, asking for a field trip, field trips cost, when we send a permission home, a permission slip home to ask our students to attend a field trip, there are some times that be associated with that, so it's kind of equivalent to that.
I would say, I think it's great that we're connecting nature and education again, so that's wonderful.
Just to mention on the inclusion specialists, I really appreciate that being added. I think anything, you know, we're doing to make sure that kids have experiences both in the classroom and the opportunity to be with their peers, doing fun things outside of the classroom, it's a, it's a big deal. So, appreciate that, glad it's going well.
I'll echo that as well. And I'll also ask, do we see, or are we seeing any kind of trends, because we have in a regular school curriculum, for need for social-emotional support in any of these programs during the summer?
That is a really great question. What I will tell you is, we have the fortune during the summer, when issues arise, we can talk with folks within Parkway or within Rockwood outside of community ed. I can tell you that we too have started to do some parent speaker series programs, to bring parents in and talk about, I think we've just, we've done a couple on how certain social media is impacting middle schoolers, for example. And so, I'm not going to say that we're fully there, am I going to say that that is certainly an area that we will continue to look at? Absolutely.
It's also interesting how many children are involved in highly engaging activities, some of the behaviors outside, and so, it's interesting. That's been an unintended consequence of the new science curriculum in elementary. A lot of teachers are saying that when the students are involved in hands-on STEM experiences, behavior in classes.
Interesting. I just like to, I say this every year when it comes, but I, every year, it's true, Mike oftentimes meets with us in the fall and a couple of times during the year, and I just want to say, he's just been such a great partner. He's innovative, we're taking off, as he pointed out, in new areas. Mike has become very familiar to our principals, yeah, he spends a lot of time with them, there's a lot of planning, he listens to them, he tries to do his best he can to support them, whether it's Adventure Club or other areas. So it's, you know, this has really been, Mike and I were talking recently, I, when we, when we got involved in this partnership, I thought it was the right thing. It is, it has exceeded my expectations, and a lot of that has to do with the approach of leadership, and Mike and his staff have just been, been wonderful there. Mike was at STEM Fest on Friday night, and I show up there, and there he is, he's at STEM Fest.
Yeah, anybody in.
Well, anybody in, but no, it was just great, and LeAnn was there, you know, our director of Adventure Club. So it just, you know, his presence and his partnership has just been superb, and I like to think of the things that we've been engaged in, this has been just marvelous, when you see 50,000 opportunities, that's just, that's unbelievable. I mean, it's just marvelous, you know, 10 months to 81 or 82-years-old. Community ed as a philosophy has always been designed to be that umbrella in the community that encompasses, brings people together of all ages, and Mike, we're doing that, and I can't thank you enough.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I wanted to add too, to Dr. Marty, just to, because he's here and we can tell him, thank you, but, and I would say too, so not only do you see all of these amazing things on the outside, but truly, having worked with his team over the last couple of years for, you know, a number of different things, you really can go to them and say, this is what I envision, or this is what I want, and they truly, like, make it happen. So, kudos to you and your team, Mike, you guys really are amazing to work with, so thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Susan Urbey-Hawkinson, Elementary Curriculum Coordinator, that's over ELA, Reading Intervention.
She does a lot.
She does, she does a lot.
Good evening, okay. Good evening, President Todd, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover, I'm happy to have this opportunity to provide you with some information regarding the upcoming targeted evaluation of our elementary reading intervention program, and to give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have. Over the past few years, several factors have suggested the need to study our current approaches to serving our struggling readers in our elementary schools. Missouri legislation concerning identifying and responding to students who display characteristics of dyslexia, a recommendation from the Middle School Reading Targeted Evaluation citing the need for improved transitions between grades 5 and 6, reduction in reading intervention staffing in many schools, and the desire to ensure we are providing interventions that are both effective and financially responsible are the main factors that influenced our decision to evaluate our program. I keep forgetting to click. In January and February of this year, elementary reading intervention specialists with input from building principals identified four topics of needed study. The first topic was student selection and progress monitoring. The study of this topic will include reviewing how students in need of reading intervention are identified, and the most effective ways to monitor student growth and progress over the course of time. The next area of intervention, I'm clicking too much, sorry. The next, the next area will be to study our resources, structures, and scheduling. This will include an analysis of our tiered approach to reading intervention, effective elementary school reading intervention programs and resources, and the model through which those programs are delivered. Reading recovery, a widely-used first-grade reading intervention, was also identified as an area of study. We will be looking at the effectiveness of the reading recovery intervention in Parkway schools, the implementation benefits and costs, and the fiscal impact of this program. And finally, we will be looking at the area of dyslexia in regards to identification methods and intervention processes. This topic will include our screening and identification process specific to dyslexia and the related Missouri legislation, resources and training that might be needed to improve intervention for students with characteristics of dyslexia, communication processes that we use with guardians and teachers, and our ongoing progress monitoring. As I mentioned earlier, reading interventionists and building principals provided input regarding the topics to be studied. Tonight, I hope to hear any additional questions that you may have about our study, our elementary reading intervention, and this spring, our work groups, which will be made up of reading interventionists and other stakeholders, will work to complete the study with the goal of bringing recommendations to you by November of 2020. So at this time, I'd be happy to hear any questions that you may have, or areas that you would like us to consider in our study.
I would just, I assume this is the case, but just making sure that we do use our racial equity and other forms of equity lens in looking at all the information. Thank you.
Just maybe a little bit more information, Susan, since we're, I think this is the second year now we've addressed dyslexia.
Yes.
And so, when you, when we say we're going to study that, I mean, is it, is there, what do we, we learn?
So we've learned a lot. The processes that we established at the beginning when the legislation just came through, what we learned was, finding the right assessment tools was a little bit of a trick, and we, the tool that we're currently using as our screener is actually no longer going to be available, so we need to find something else that we can use, and hopefully find something that is maybe perhaps a little more reliable than what we currently have. We've also noticed that communicating with parents, when you use the words dyslexia can be somewhat alarming, so we want to be sure that we're giving accurate information, but also not doing things to heighten anxiety unless, unless we need to really be worrying about things. And then, we have discovered, I would say, that training for our interventionists in responding to dyslexia is definitely an area that we need to continue to look at. That hasn't been something that has been part of our ongoing professional development, and they are feeling the need to, to learn more. So, those will probably be the things that we'll be thinking more about.
And along those lines, since Missouri just is kind of very recent to the party concerning that, have we looked at, or are we going to be looking at states who have been, who've had things in place for many more years than we have?
Yes, we definitely will be looking, when we look at other programs, we'll definitely take a look. A lot of other states influences, influenced the way that we started, and we'll continue to look for those states who are farther along in the process than we are, yeah.
I would just say, I think it's great that we're, you know, we did, I think it did a really good job in laying that out, and, but it, but as anything, once you have it in practice, I think you learn a lot, and I appreciate Susan kind of reviewing that it's time, even after two years, to really take a deeper dive, and certainly for parents' benefit, you know, we're so engrossed in just getting this started, but certainly the impact on parents when they see this and understand it. Okay, thank you very much. Can I, I just, one more thing.
Sure.
Since you mentioned reading recovery.
Yes.
I don't know if the board understands, we've had reading recovery in Parkway for 20.
Since, I've been here for 21-years, and we've had it the whole time.
Yeah, and I, coming from, we had it in the district I was in since probably the mid-'80s. Reading recovery is a very intensive program, very designed to be pretty labor-intensive in terms of, I think it's every day, still 30-minutes every day?
If you, if you do the requirements of the program, it's a first-grade student for 30-minutes one-on-one every day.
Every day.
And certified teachers are supposed to take four students in the course of their day.
Yeah, and so, one of the things that I know, and Kevin and Susan others have really been examining, that's pretty labor-intensive, and while it's, it has had some positive results in the many years, is there other ways to deliver that, that certainly will still engage in the intervention? The other thing that it's, it's very focused on first grade, and you hope that after, is it still 60 lessons? Is that still about the?
20 weeks.
Yeah, about 60, so the goal is that after 60, you know, intensive, you know, that those students hopefully will graduate. Well, that's fine, but that may, they may encounter, they get in the second and third grade, you know, as they get into content, more reading, they may encounter, so they may, you know, get up to grade level, but then they're still, so I think there's, there's a lot of questions about, again, how do we are using resources, is that fair?
Yes, very fair, yes.
And I think it's, it's time, again, after all these years, probably to look at that, that approach.
And I think a lot of the new science that's coming out about how young learners learn to read, there is a population that reading recovery is not the intervention, and that's typically our students who have characteristics of dyslexia, and so, traditionally, that has just been the intervention in first grade, is reading recovery, so we really need to be looking at other ways to meet the group that that's not the correct approach for.
Literacy is still very important, and I think Susan, we've got Susan obviously in this role, and she's done a real fine job, but it's, you know, it's just the one thing that we can, we have to continually looking at, how we're approaching, because literacy is such a key factor, and of course, student success, and how it's going to fall over into other content areas as well, and student confidence and student.
Absolutely.
Ability to really, you know, take off from, from their learning in math and so many of the content areas.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tonight, we have no special meeting, and the next scheduled closed session will be held Wednesday, April 1st, at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. Now may have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you all for your attendance.